We're rolling. We are rolling.
Okay, welcome to another episode of the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm joined today by Anton, co-host Anton Schiefer. Welcome to the show.
Thanks. I've been a longtime fan. I mean, as long as the podcast has been around. This is episode, what, five now?
No, it's like, I don't know, eight or nine. I've lost track.
What? Have there been a bunch that maybe just haven't been published yet or something? I don't know.
No, they're all out there. I've run out of episodes. This has been a rough week. I had an episode canceled, so. So later on, we're going to be speaking to city council member Steve Fletcher from Ward Three. But to start the show, we're just gonna have Anton and I bantering back and forth.
I was gonna say, I think I was one of the first, you know, maybe people to follow your Wedge Live account. And I only remember that because I think at the time, we were kind of doing, we were going to the same neighborhood meetings. We weren't in the same neighborhood. But I was in Whittier and go into Whittier Alliance meetings and you were in.
I was in the wedge.
In the wedge, of course. You would never leave. And you were going to basically the exact same meetings, but with a different cast of characters. Because I would read your, I would, you know, go to my meetings and then read your tweets when you would tweet about your meetings. I'm like, oh, is this the exact same thing happening just across the dale? And.
That's, that's basically how I've met all my friends in Minneapolis is through live tweeting meetings.
Yeah.
Think, I think you might be my oldest friend in Minneapolis.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We met in 2014, right?
Um, I think so. I mean, it would have been soon after the, I mean, soon after the, you created your account and then pretty soon after was the 2320 Colfax saga, right? I mean, that was kind of your, the first sort of like big hyper local news story, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I think I spent like the first year in Minneapolis. I didn't make any friends. It's like not, not because I failed at making friends. It's just the kind of person I am.
Yeah. Well, who wants to, you know, who wants to talk about this guy who only talks about, you know, 2320 Colfaxes?
Well, that, that was before I got, I mean, the way I made friends in Minneapolis was getting engaged in politics. Cause otherwise I have no interest in other people.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm happy all by myself. But once you start caring about politics, you have to start caring about people and like engaging with people. And so now I have, now I have too many friends.
Yeah, you have all these people who go to these meetings and be engaged and it's just, it's awful. Yeah, I understand.
There was that time in Whittier when you ran for the board, the neighborhood board, and you were accused of serving up people apple pie, I think.
Yeah.
So how do you characterize your message?
There was, there was a, there was like some kind of next door post about, um, you know, someone had their preferred slate of candidates and I was not on it. And yeah, there, there was some kind of, you know, like feedback about how I would, you know, something about apple pie was involved. And I think there were some other candidates that were, that were mocked in a similar way.
There was, there was a whole slate of candidates who were bad for Whittier that year.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was one of them. Yeah. I think, you know, one of them, I, I think Shane, Shane Moran, who I think was another candidate who ran. And then, um, I know that my other friend of the time, Grayson, I think ran. I think he actually got elected.
Right, yeah.
But, you know, I think with, with those things, it's kind of like, you end up serving on those, those boards and you kind of end up serving with a lot of people that maybe you, you know, wanted to get rid of and are, it makes for, you know, uncomfortable conversations or you kind of get burned out on serving in those things if you're serving with a bunch of people who don't share your values. You know, so that makes it tough.
The problem when you run as a slate is you could be the one person who wins and then you're stuck. You're stuck. It's kind of like city council.
Yeah, you gotta go to the meetings and everyone else is just, you know, sitting there live tweeting, you know, the meetings and having fun and, you know. Yeah, they get to have all the fun and you got to take all the blame, so.
It's like running as a progressive for Minneapolis City Council and then serving with 12 other Lisa Goodmans. Like, that wouldn't be fun.
Yeah, no, I mean, would you want to run for reelection after that? I mean, I don't, I wouldn't enjoy it.
You'd resign.
Yeah, exactly.
So how have you gotten along over the last year, Anton? Like, we're friends. You're my oldest friend, you're my oldest friend in Minneapolis, but I don't know what you've been up to.
It's because, I mean, I'm up in northeast now. I'm up in Steve Fletcher's, you know, Ward Three. So, you know, things are, are different up here. And as I say, I'm in Ward Three for like a little bit because I don't think I'll be in Ward Three after the redistricting. I think like that's gonna change.
You're, you're in the part of Ward Three that you think is gonna get cut out?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in Ward One probably.
You think? Are you not, are you not far enough west that you would be safe?
You know, I, I think my guess is that, you know, I mean, Ward One goes like in the very, you know, from the very top, like, I mean, it stretches to the river. So, um, you know, from, from the northeast corner anyway. So I think it'll, I, I think that like geographic boundary of Ward Three is gonna, is gonna shrink. And I think, yeah, Ward One is probably where I'll end up being.
I think drawing mental maps of redistricting on a podcast is gonna be so compelling.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is prime content. This is good content right here.
Cause I, I've been wondering about North Minneapolis, like Wards Four and Five, like, are we gonna keep the river as the distinction between those two North Minneapolis wards? That's what I've been thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, they could, you know, share or decide to, you know, stretch across the river. I think that would be fine. I mean, it's just, I think it's been a historical, you know, historic boundary. It's kind of like, you have the river and you have, 94 is kind of like the other, you know, like the other huge barrier that like runs through North Minneapolis. And so the, a couple of like, you know, geographic issues. But yeah, so.
Whereas Ward Three spans the river.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
You've got the downtown portion. Tell us about Ward Three, since we've got Steve Fletcher coming up. What are the distinctive features of Ward Three?
Well, I mean, yeah, we, we've got the, the downtown, I mean, the downtown core. I think Ward Three has seen like the most growth of any ward in the last, you know, few years. I've, I've seen, um, I've seen some, you know, graphs of, you know, how, how much housing growth has happened in other, in, you know, various wards across the city. And I think Three is far and above anything else. So a lot of the growth, obviously, like is in the North Loop area. But also some on the, you know, this side of, you know, the downtown northeast, I guess, which is, you know, the, just across the river.
Yeah. I think part of Ward Ten will probably get swallowed up by Ward Thirteen in the south.
Oh, in the, in the southwest area?
Yeah, the east, the East Harriet portion, maybe Echo. I don't know.
Yeah, as long as they, you know, refuse to build more housing in Ward Thirteen, then that geographic area is just gonna kind of expand and, you know.
Which means if, if we by a long shot somehow elect one of the conservative candidates in Ward Ten, there's no way they could get reelected in 2023. Because, you know, Ward Ten will have cut out some of the most conservative parts in the southwest.
Yeah, it's, it'll be definitely interesting to see. And something to keep your eye on is, you know, how the redistricting is gonna go with the Charter Commission being in the news and being extremely popular among pretty much everyone at this point. Cause I'm a big, big Charter Commission fan.
I think we've stretched out as much redistricting and mental maps as we can possibly squeeze into the podcast. What are we gonna ask Steve Fletcher? What do you want to know from this guy?
I mean, obviously this week has been a pretty, you know, there's been a lot of stuff happening. I think you've probably paid a little bit more attention today in terms of what's happened with the.
So they were recording on Friday and on Sunday, Dante Wright was killed by Brooklyn Center Police. And so we've had protests at the, the police station in Brooklyn Center and we've had a couple of days of curfews, state of emergency. And so that's the context for this episode.
And then the, um, the, the city council took some actions today, I think.
Yeah, there was a non-binding resolution against less lethal weapons. So things like rubber bullets and gas, which passed 11 to one with Palmasano being the only one to, to vote against that. And then there was some conversation around the state of emergency and the fact that the, the mayor is not showing up to city council meetings, which you would think you would do when you grab, grab some power that's kind of not, not subject to the normal democratic process that we have set up by declaring a state of emergency. You'd think the mayor would show up and kind of talk about that, talk about what's happened.
Yeah, and he's, he's been very, you know, not out in front of the news and not vocal in terms of letting people know what's going on. I feel like we kind of have this, we have these, this council meeting that happened today was kind of the most, the, the biggest like statement, I think, that we've heard, you know, from the, from leadership in Minneapolis. And we haven't really heard much from the mayor's office, which has, you know, control over MPD, so.
Right. I mean, they, they do those operations safety net press conferences with various law enforcement officials.
Right. Well, I did just get a text from Steve Fletcher who says he's running five minutes late, so.
Oh.
We do have to, we have to stretch.
That's great.
We have to stretch even more, John, so.
Keep stretching. I mean, the, the last episode, I did, I did start cutting some of the boring host banter out of the, uh, out of the show, so.
Okay, that's fair.
We can afford some dead air, I guess. I'm putting more effort into editing, editing the show than I was to start. It's like surprisingly hard work. Putting a podcast together.
Yeah, no, you didn't, you didn't sign up for this. I mean, you, you, you kind of did by putting the, the stretch goal of having 300 people sign up. And so, so how long ago did you start the Patreon? Like?
It might have been, I think it was around the 2017 election. I think enough people were like, hey, this seems like a lot of work. You should probably have a way for me to support you.
Yeah, no, that's, I, I think that's, you know, when I noticed that. And then it seems like you got your, was the first surge of support around the, the Carol Becker thing. Because that was like an actual news story all of a sudden.
I think, I mean, we had a good, good amount of support before then, but it may be close to doubled.
Okay.
The support at the time, having Carol Becker try to steal the name Wedge Live. So great move, Carol.
Yeah, I, I think that's.
Wedge Live has never been more popular.
Yeah, it catapulted you into like the mainstream press or, you know, I mean, I, all of a sudden, well, once, you know, Tony Webster's writing about you, you know, it's a big, it's a big deal. So I think he, he kind of wrote like the definitive article of like what was happening and I think reached out to, to Carol for comment. Yeah, then next thing you know, it's in the Star Tribune and city pages and people are subscribing to your Patreon and wanting to check out what Wedge Live is all about, so.
Yeah. Cause with tweets, like people see the tweets. If I put out the tweets with the podcast, there's like a whole bunch of behind the scenes stuff you gotta do that nobody sees.
Yeah, you gotta edit and check for levels and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's work that goes into it. I can appreciate that.
Yeah, and I, I'm not even sure how many people enjoy podcasts, you know?
You know, I mean, I wasn't, I was a big, I mean, I'm not a huge podcast person. I mean, there's a handful that I'll listen to on a, on a regular basis. But I'm not, you know, that into them. But I think everyone has their kind of like niche interests. And I think this, I think Minneapolis politics is like a, a good, healthy niche interest to, you know, that, that there are people who are, that want to hear this material, that want to hear, you know, you've talked to council candidates or even just people who have opinions, I think.
Yeah, cause the danger is you put a lot of work into something that people were never asking for in the first place. Like, what happened to Wedge Live? Well, he's, he's off editing his podcast. You're not gonna hear about him for a week.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So hopefully, I mean, hopefully it, you know, pays off or people, you know, feel that this is important content. I mean, you've gone from, it was tweets and then it was the, the website, you know, where you kind of write stuff. And then, did you have a YouTube? Did you have the YouTube after that or was the YouTube before that?
Well, that all, that all felt like simultaneous. I don't know. I forget when I started making videos of public meetings, but.
Okay.
Pretty, pretty close.
I think that, that was like, that was high quality content. It still is high quality content, although it's a little different with the whole, you know, virtual meetings. I mean, you just don't get the same.
Yeah, you need people showing up in the room testifying. Nobody, it's hard to do wacky, over the top things over the phone.
Yeah, yeah, you, you don't get visuals.
You need the facial expressions and the gestures and the props. People bring props all the time.
Oh, yeah, those are, those are always great.
I don't know. I, I wonder what development and planning meetings are gonna be like when things open up again.
Yeah, I mean, are people gonna just keep, you know, calling in virtually? I mean, it's not that fun to like go down to city hall and, you know, do that whole thing. But it also is, you know, like a, a show of force or, you know, something when, when you see everyone on camera and, you know, I, I can remember, you know, the, the 2040 meetings when, you know, you had people on camera with the signs and, you know, you see the, the pan out and you see the big room and things like that. So that, that can make a difference visually in terms of how people perceive things, but.
How do you think this is going, Anton?
Um, I mean, we're chatting and it looks like a guest has joined, so.
Okay.
Hopefully that's a, hopefully that's a good sign that, I mean, I hope the guest is Steve. I'm.
Yeah.
If we get a different guest.
So my notes for the show, I feel like when I looked at them again, I realized that so many of them aren't questions. I just wrote like a blog post. It's like, I'm gonna give Steve Fletcher my thoughts today.
Hey, Steve.
That could be hard. Hey, Steve Fletcher is here. Thanks for coming.
Happy to be here.
Steve Fletcher is the city council member in Ward Three. He is running for reelection this year. So we had a pretty wild council meeting this morning. Lots of opinions expressed.
What message does it send to black communities like mine to have a military presence with folks walking around with machine guns out? And at the same time, in my ward, someone was shot. So we are dealing with a situation in which my constituents are feeling as though they are living in a police state, but not actually being protected. So this is a statement as a black council member, as a council member who lives on the border of Brooklyn Center. I have not been engaged by the mayor or anyone from the mayor's office. I think that if we are going to be declaring states of emergencies frequently now, apparently as a city, that the least that we can do and expect is that if the mayor has the authority to bypass the democratic process of actually the council members who most directly represent the impacted communities, we should at least expect communication as well as accountability and open forum that allows for conversation and transparency.
And just, you know, for context again, uh, the show is being recorded on Friday. Dante Wright was killed on Sunday. And at this morning's council meeting, we talked, they talked about, uh, less lethal weapons, the state of emergency declaration. The mayor wasn't there. Do you want to talk a little bit, a bit about the state of emergency?
Yeah, uh, you know, the mayor declared a state of emergency, um, after Dante Wright was killed. The mayor has the right to do that for 72 hours, uh, before council would need to convene to extend the state of emergency if we thought it needed to go beyond that. And it would be sort of my expectation that the mayor would also be very judicious about using that and would want to communicate to the public about how decisions were made about that emergency and, uh, what this, what the emergency powers were used for. I think it's very important to be extra transparent about that because, uh, we're short-circuiting democracy for expediency when we declare an emergency. Uh, and so the mayor was invited to speak to council today, um, as, as is the custom. We've had the mayor, uh, visiting council to report on the use of the state of emergency over at the public health emergency related to COVID. And, uh, he declined to attend. So, uh, we had some questions for staff, but honestly, it was not very satisfying asking those questions of staff. Cause we really wanted to know how that executive power was used.
Yeah, cause one of the things that I'm afraid we're gonna get really good at responding to the aftermath of police killings by deploying soldiers, we're gonna implement curfews, we're gonna do all the state of emergency things, but we're gonna fail at actually stopping police killings. Because this happened last summer, obviously. It's happened again. It was entirely predictable that it would happen again. I think a lot of people, I think Lisa Bender said last year, who's my council member in Ward Ten, that it's going to happen again. Mayor Carter this week said.
We have to ask ourselves, why, how does this keep happening over and over again in America, in the world, in Minnesota? We have to know that the first law of motion is that objects in motion will remain in motion until some force stops it from happening.
What do we do to stop this from happening over and over again?
Well, so from my perspective, uh, I don't think that we can reform the existing system. Uh, I don't think that we can implement a new training, uh, or some new bureaucracy, uh, around the practice of current policing. I think that we actually have to change policing. And I think that especially until we show that we're actually willing to do that. Uh, I think there's, there's been so much talk of reform for so long, uh, that if you're one of the officers whose behavior we're hoping will change, you have every reason, uh, to shrug and ignore whatever current calls for reform are happening because so many of them have been implemented and resulted in no change. So I think it's very important that we show that we're willing to totally change how we do things. Uh, I mean, that was why the Safety For All budget that we passed was so important. I think there were people who felt like it wasn't enough, but one thing that it did that's very important is it took, uh, by the time we implement the mental health response, 15% of the calls that we've been sending to MPD and it's just routing them to other people to respond. So we're just saying, we don't trust that we could change MPD's response. We don't think that we could get a good response from MPD. We're actually gonna just respond in a different way with different resources. Uh, and I think that's, for me, that's the most important part of the, the transformation that we need to do that I've been focused on. Partially because it's the most important part in some practical ways and partially because it's the part that the council has the most control over.
So let's talk about the public safety charter amendment. It's conceivable that you could pass that. I think maybe it was you who said this could end up being a very status quo change. Like, it could be no change at all. You could pass that and really keep, keep traditional law enforcement funded at the same level and not actually fund the alternative responses. The, the charter amendment itself is not the change, so.
That's right.
So how, how can you use that change and, and fill it in, you know, fill in the pieces of that and make that, make that happen?
So right now, the way the charter is written, it doesn't matter how progressive and forward-thinking the council is. There's a lot of things that we simply cannot do. Um, and under the new charter, if you have the right people who have a vision, uh, for what public safety could look like. And by the way, uh, I think we could do some amazing things with public safety that could actually produce far better outcomes than any city has managed to produce. And so I think there's an opportunity for us to build something great. We have to create a structure that at least allows for that. But just like the United States Constitution, just like our state constitution, the charter is only as good as the people enacting. Uh, and the charter is only as good as, uh, the residents of Minneapolis hold us accountable for making it be. And so it matters a lot that we pass the charter change, uh, on public safety this year. It also matters a lot, uh, that we elect people who are gonna actually take advantage of that charter change to create meaningful transformation in our public safety. Uh, cause if we pass the charter change but elect people who want the status quo, we will still get the status quo.
And you, I think you have two very status quo opponents.
I.
That's my assessment.
I, I would agree with that based on what I've seen from them. Yeah, I think they are, they are both running in the year 2021. They both appear to be running on a platform of don't change so much on public safety. That I, I can't imagine being in that posture, but that is, that is where we are.
Yeah, and we elect two kinds of candidates in Minneapolis, like conservatives and progressives, just like national politics. You, you have actually proposed things this term to solve problems. It is conceivable you could elect a council member who does no work. We have those kinds of council members in Minneapolis. You could elect someone who does, who operates that way.
Or who undoes things. Um, you know, I'm gonna think, uh, at least one of them's been vocally opposed to the, to the regulations on facial recognition technology, for example. So, you know, we, we could see, uh, we, we could see a term if this goes the wrong way of people, uh, unraveling a lot of the progress that we made this term.
Although, like, one thing about conservative candidates is they don't tend to put in a lot of work to undo things.
We can hope.
That's the one thing, good thing about progressive change is that you have to kind of work at undoing it. And that's, Anton, did you want to ask about the, uh, facial recognition?
Well, you know, uh, yeah, I actually like had that in a, as a question, but we can talk about it now. Uh, you know, I just wanted to talk about, I, I know that you kind of led the effort on that. And I just kind of wanted to ask you about your experience passing, like, you know, something that isn't necessarily popular or like, you know, immediately news. It's not like there's a groundswell of people that are talking about this, but I, I still feel like it's an important issue. You know, what's it like, kind of, you know, having to, to do that or, you know, convince other council members that that's important? And then also it relates a little bit to the issues that I've heard around police policy. I mean, if we've all kind of heard that city council can't really talk, can't pass ordinances that pertain specifically to police policy. But, you know, this ordinance doesn't seem to have that, that issue. I know it's a citywide thing. So what, what's the kind of the difference in terms of how this is, how you structured that to deal with that issue?
Sure. So the, uh, first of all, in terms of the legal sort of, how, how did we have the authority to do it? We had the authority to do it, uh, because we applied it to the entire city. It wasn't about policing. We're, we are allowed as the city council to pass ordinances in the city. And, uh, it, it's not, it is true that it will probably impact MPD the most, at least in the short term. Uh, because police departments have been somewhat on the vanguard of using facial recognition technology, but that, they're actually not the only application. So we've seen, uh, some very weird proposals for interactive kiosks, uh, come through Public Works or other departments, where people are trying to install smart cities tech that's not very thoughtful about data privacy. So there actually are reasons that we wanted to rein in facial recognition that weren't about policing. And so that was, uh, part of the distinction that we had to look at. So we are not allowed to pass police policy, but we can pass an ordinance and then police have to, to comply with it, just like every other department. And so that was the differentiator there. But working on that issue, that was one of my favorite things to work on this term. And it was, what's interesting about it is it's, you know, you said it wasn't popular and I actually kind of disagree with that. It's actually, it, it's popular with just about everybody I talked to about it, but the level of heat on it is very low, right? Like, it, it's not the first, second or third thing that people are talking about, but when you talk to people about it, everybody's, at least in the back of their minds, a little bit concerned about data privacy and recognizing that at some level, uh, their rights are being intruded on in ways that they weren't necessarily, that we haven't necessarily contended with. Uh, and so I think people have appreciated me working on it. There's been a really good dedicated corps of people who really do care about that issue, who've been driving the work, who've been, uh, great partners. And I think that, that Post Me Coalition has been really effective at just continuing persistently to keep focus on that issue and, uh, to keep working on it. And, you know, we were able to get one piece of it done. Uh, they want to do a broader, uh, you know, piece of work on surveillance technology and military technology generally to make sure that we have, uh, a set of guidelines about what technology our city is using. And I think that's, um, a really good idea. I think it made sense to split facial recognition off so we could get that done more quickly. But I actually think there's more, more of that work ahead. And, uh, I, I actually do think that whether, uh, whether people are yelling in the streets about it or not, data privacy is one of the key issues, uh, facing us in the next 10 to 20 years that we want to make sure our city is ahead of.
You know, the, the surveillance issue is going to, you know, become probably a, a bigger issue, you know, going forward. I think some people are becoming more and more aware, um, it, over the last year, you know, I mean, we have people in, in South Minneapolis that, you know, you have these helicopters flying overhead all the time. And, you know, we've seen with, with Black Lives Matter, uh, protests, you know, being, being surveilled with, uh, you know, various things, you know, whether it's, uh, the spoof cellphone towers, you know, called the MC catchers and things like that. So, you know, restricting the, the use of that, obviously with these types of things, you only are. you only, or we only within the city have the authority to restrict that, that use within MPD and not necessarily through other law enforcement or partners. That, that's, that's my understanding, correct?
That's correct, yeah. So we, we explicitly can't pass laws that apply to other levels of government. And so I think that, but I do think we set an example, right? I mean, one of the ways that we use, that cities become the laboratories for a lot of good policy, where we pass it first and then eventually the state catches up, eventually federal government catches up, maybe if ever. But a lot of times, a lot of the best ideas, we can get implemented at the local level and it takes off from there. So there, there's a, there's a value in other jurisdictions in us doing it, even if we don't have the ability.
Move it back to me.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, you're.
You gotta say back to you, John.
I'm just the co-host. Like, I mean, I'm.
Let's talk about something that's been frustrating to me. Like, I had, I had writer's block for most of the last year because of the, the crime and safety politics in Minneapolis, like, it made no, the conversation started not to make sense to me. I didn't know how to respond. And so I didn't, I didn't write a whole lot, even though I was thinking about it a lot. And so we've got a political movement that sprung up in the city centered around the idea that Minneapolis failed to adequately fund its police department rather than a well-funded police department failing catastrophically. So can you talk about, I mean, I've seen you get ripped apart on WCCO or going to the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association. It feels like we, we just don't have a shared understanding of what's been happening. And like, the ways that our existing system is not failing, because the risk, it feels like to me, the risk is in what we have, not in what we might develop to replace it.
Yeah, I think the way, the way people have been absorbing information this year has, has taken the conversation to a very frustrating place because we're not even operating from the same set of facts often. The way, the way rumors spread about crime, I mean, it, it is a common occurrence that I will get calls that say, what are you gonna do about all of the terrible break-ins and burglaries that have happened, you know, on this street? And I call the precinct and say, what aren't you telling me? And they're saying, I don't know what you're talking about. And there's just like rumors. I mean, I, I'll hear about like a shooting in Gold Medal Park, and it turns out there was no such thing. And so there are people who are just furious with me for not addressing imaginary crimes. And then anytime I talk about that, people get furious that I'm making light of crime. And of course I'm not, and there actually is serious crime happening. And anybody who cares about the city cares about that and wants to see everybody experience a high level of safety. But we get to this place where I think the, the, the really dangerous phrase that I started to hear was perception is reality. And, and it is very much not. We actually can't make policy to address perception. We can, we can try to solve things that are actually happening. We can't actually make a policy to solve things that people perceive to be happening. And in fact, perception, a lot of times, is where racial bias comes in. Perception, a lot of times, is where people's assumptions about each other comes in, in ways that is totally counterproductive to a functioning society. And so we really are in a place where that conversation's been hard and, and we're not operating from the same set of facts. So I try as much as possible to actually point people to open data portals to show like, you can all look up the same information and we could actually be at least operating from, from some common numbers and from, and from some common understanding of what's happening. But it's really hard.
And even, even if you acknowledge that crime has gone up in a really bad way in the city, like the explanation for why that is, from my perspective, can't be that, you know, the city council defunded the police department because you didn't take away a single officer. We're hiring cops as fast as we can right now.
A single dollar, because, you know, the executive leadership enforced no discipline for just blowing over overtime. And so as much as, you know, we simultaneously got beat up for proposing to cut money from the police budget. And then I, I would bet that when we get to the end of the year and we look at how, how overtime gets put in under these emergency declarations and how money's gotten shifted around, we're not gonna find that we even actually succeeded in cutting any money. And so I, I, yeah, I, I think the, the understanding of what's happened is really strange. And, and I also think it's really, if you look at the crime stats, one of the things that you see is that we had a terrible quarter over the summer, right? Like, Q3 2020 was really bad in the city by just about any measurement. And then it's been steadily dropping ever since. And it is counterintuitive to everybody's argument that crime could be steadily dropping at the same time that we've had the lowest police staffing level that we've had in decades. If police staffing correlated to safety, that shouldn't happen, right? So we, we're all having to reckon with, you know, actual facts, which can be, you know, really pesky things. There are things that are challenging about what's happened over the last year to anybody's worldview. But certainly, I, I, I think that this year has been a, because of the choice that a huge number of officers made to leave at the same time, it's been kind of a fascinating unplanned control experiment in what police staffing levels actually do and don't correlate to. And we've seen things, you know, we've seen crime steadily dropping since that attrition started.
Yeah, the, the police staffing by population conversation is frustrating because you can look, I don't know if it's Detroit and Kansas City, you can look at some really high crime cities that have lots of cops per capita. And it's apparently not making a difference there. So people throwing around stats about that.
Is this, is this something where like, I mean, can we ever really, I guess, i- is there somewhere where we can reconcile with people's perception? I mean, it, it feels like a lot of people are getting their, you know, there's a certain set of people who get their news from Facebook, you know, and from Nextdoor and from, was it the Citizen app or whatever? I mean, where people are getting like this kind of like barrage of like crime, 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 you know, it, it's happening all the time. Is there any kind of way that we can reconcile people's perception with what's actually happening? I mean, I feel like we're, we're kind of getting to this point where people hear this all the time and are getting like afraid to leave their houses just because, you know, they input, they, they take in news from these sources. I mean, is there really a, a, a counterbalance to that, that, that we can make?
I, I think so over time. I, I, I think some of this is about new access to information and also new social patterns where you're absorbing that information in isolation in different ways. So, you know, one of the things that that forces us to leave our houses so that we don't let those fears overtake us is that we get the opportunity to see each other. You know, you leave your house to go to work and you see that everything's okay. We have opportunities to meet up. If you're basically sitting in your apartment all the time and watching Citizen and you're just absorbing information that makes it sound scary out of context, and you're not getting the chance to see it in any other kind of context. I mean, I understand why that's created a a set of fears for some people. We have to overcome it, right? And I think part of that is gonna be about socially reinforcing resiliency with each other, right? Like, I think that there ought to be a little bit of a, a point of pride that like, I live in a city and the city's a place where all kinds of diverse activity happens. And I'm not someone who gets thrown off by seeing, you know, something a little unusual happen. I'm not someone who lets that just, you know, tank my whole day. And I, I think a lot of the, a, a lot of the places where, when I've traveled to other cities, people have a sense of pride, like I live in the city, you know, I, I'm someone who's, you know, sort of tough, tough enough or open-minded enough or adventurous enough to be a part of this, you know, great social experiment. And I think right now, there's actually something different going on, which is actually a socially reinforcing, almost class performance of fear as evidence of a kind of class status of a like, or as a kind of performance of, of social maturity. Where, you know, getting together in your neighborhood group and talking about how terrible everything is because a bike got stolen out of your 300 unit apartment complexes is, is like a, a, a kind of social reinforcement. And so people are reinforcing each other's discomfort right now in a way that I really hope we get past because it's not a, it's not a sustainable culture for a city. For everybody to be putting all of their energy into reinforcing for each other how bad everything is in a way that spirals well beyond any real problems to solve. Minneapolis is actually a pretty great place to live.
Right. That's, that's why we all live there. I could feel the Citizen app kind of changing my outlook. Like, it was, it was messing with my head. Like, I kind of enjoyed getting the, like, 50 people just beat up a guy. Like, I know that that just, that didn't happen in Uptown just now because I was there. So, you know, burnt food in an apartment building. There's some fun parts of the Citizen app, but like, it was messing with my head. I was checking those notifications too often.
Well, and the, and the, the problem is that when you, when you hear people exaggerating and when you see these things that you, that are, that are kind of hyperbolic, we end up in a place where then we're not all taking seriously the things that we actually should be trying to address. Because, you know, underlying all of this, like, the reason we're even having this conversation is that there is actual crime, right? That there are actually public safety issues that we should be figuring out as a community. How do we resolve this? How do we prevent it? How do we respond to it? How do we reduce the incidences of this in the future? And, and I, I think that that's something that gets lost when everybody's making a big deal out of everything and sort of losing a sense of perspective. And so I, I, I really do hope that as the pandemic ends, as we all get vaccinated, we can all get out in the world again and see things with our own eyes, that more people start to rediscover their sense of perspective so that we can have the conversations that we all need to have about the things that we all commonly feel like we need to solve. And those things are there. And I think that it's, it's frustrating to have the conversation get so detached from fact sometimes.
So when are we getting back to like in-person council meetings? Do you have any sense of that?
You know, I think that'll be one of the later things to come back. I, I think we, there may be sort of a hybrid where the council is there, but we're, we're still doing the public hearings remotely. You know, we, we need to get to a pretty high level of public immunization and, and really have the, the pandemic under control before we, before it'd be advisable to just invite the public into a closed space to, to have those kinds of hearings.
I know last year, Cam Gordon was getting antsy about having these remote meetings. He wanted everyone to be getting back.
Well, I really.
At least council members, I think.
It's bad. It, it is a bad way to do politics, right? I mean, politics is all about our connections to each other. It's about how do people come together to solve problems? And if people can't come together, that makes it harder to solve problems. I mean, you know, part of, part of this job is that sometimes we have really tough conversations in public that feel really tense in these meetings. And that's something that happens. And one of the ways that we all get through that and manage to maintain you know, healthy relationships where we can work together on the next issue is catching each other in the hallways afterwards to check in on each other, to maintain the sort of social relationship. And now we have these conversations in a council meeting where we're, you know, at odds with each other about an issue. And then the screen goes dark, right? We all, we're all disconnected and we don't get a chance to do that follow-up. Say, hey, are you okay? Hey, that got kind of rough in there. Hey, I think we might have misunderstood each other about this, whatever the case may be. And so I do think that, that makes it that much harder. And we've had to be, you know, very proactive and intentional where we can about maintaining those relationships. But man, it's hard. And I do think there's a lot of misunderstanding that goes unresolved among everybody who's participating in politics.
Yeah. So let's talk about the strong mayor. It's another thing that I've, the strong mayor proposal is another thing that I think has been kind of hampered by a lack of understanding of what happened in 2020. And the idea that, I don't know, the mayor, of all the city departments, the mayor has control over the police. And if you see 2020 as a disaster caused by a failure of public safety, then the response to that wouldn't be to empower the mayor in the same way over all the other departments. Whether you blame the mayor or not for 2020, like, the, the lack of having a strong mayor was not, not the cause. So the question is, like, how do you feel about the strong mayor proposal?
Well, I'm, I'm opposed to it and I'm, I'm opposed to it for a couple of reasons. One is that, you know, I think there's a version of this where you, you could have clarified what's executive power and what's legislative power. Because I actually think there's some need for that, clearly, because there's been no accountability for executive power, right? It's, there's, there's really not a lot of clarity about what things the mayor's accountable for. And, and I think we, we've seen some things that I would, I would expect were an executive decision that suddenly get brought to the council or that get brought to some task force or something. So that it's just never, you know, so I, I, I think that there could be clarity about e- e- executive versus legislative in a way that could be good. But the way this was written, it's really to draw the council almost entirely outside of city government. I mean, it, it, it's so specific about you can't ask for non-public data. Well, under, you know, Data Practices Act categorizes almost all constituent communications as non-public, right? Like, we, we would be doxing if we like shared our constituent emails to us, right? And so the things that we currently are able to share among staff that we're not able to share with the public, you know, 311 calls that come in through 311 that ought to be dealt with or that we can help, you know, through the council office, a lot of the constituent work that we're doing. They're drawing us out of even that. I mean, we're really gonna be operating with the same level of information that, you know, you know, journalist in the wedge who comes to a lot of meetings has, and not much more than that. And, you know, I just, I think that that's not what people expect of their government. They expect that they're sending us there and that we're getting information and that we're able to act on it on their behalf, right? Like, that's why people vote for representatives. And the way this was drawn, it really, it's so dismissive of council power and, and so aimed at really tamping down council power to a point that I don't know what the point would be of being on the council. The way they've, the way they've written it. So, so for me, I think that's, you know, the one problem. But then I think the other thing is, I mean, they are identifying a problem that I think everybody agrees on, which is that we have not felt like we've had the executive leadership that our city ought to have this term. And I think, you know, there are people who probably have an analysis that says that's about the Charter. Or that that's about, you know, the council overstepping its place in some ways. And there are people who have an analysis that it's about who was occupying that office. And I think that's a decision that people are gonna have to make. But I would say right, left and center right now, everybody agrees that we haven't had executive leadership in the way that we would like. You know, the Charter Commission's proposing one solution to it, which is to say, it must have been, it must have been a constitutional issue. And I think, you know, other people might come to a different conclusion.
Yeah, I'm a fan of the council system, watching that process happen. Seeing, you know, Lisa Goodman get irritated at Cam Gordon, having that hashed out in public, knowing where people stand and what they're proposing, having public hearings. I think that's a good process. So I'm biased against the idea that we need a strong mayor. You know, I was, I was listening to a Charter Commission meeting and someone who used to work for Mayor Fraser, who now works in St. Paul, Trudy Maloney, was saying every day when she worked in Minneapolis, she wanted a strong mayor system because she worked for the mayor. And when she went to St. Paul and started working, I think she's, like, coordinates their city council operations. I think that's her role now. Like, she, she finally appreciated the beauty of the Minneapolis system and how we had policies and procedures in Minneapolis that were 10, 15, 20 years ahead of where St. Paul is, because when the buck stops in St. Paul, it stops. Like, you can use that as a description of an authority structure, the buck stopping. Or it's simply a way to stop things from happening in. and changing and developing new new procedures. So I appreciate the council system in Minneapolis.
I I think what what you were talking about, or what you were going to mention before was that there might be inefficiencies, you know, within our Minneapolis, you know, structure of government that that need fixing. And I was kind of wondering about, you know, kind of in a a question about governance, like overall, is, you know, how the city sets long-term goals and achieves them, you know, beyond just the the legislative executive balance, obviously, is part of that. But, you know, I'm I'm used to, you know, whether it's a corporation or a nonprofit or something, having like a board of directors and to oversee kind of that that long-term stability or long-term, you know, governance. But it seems like with elected officials, you know, everything is kind of four years, you know, the institutional knowledge can come and go. And is there something that that could be fixed in that sense or that that might need to be addressed? Is that is that something that's worth taking a look at? I I don't personally feel like this proposed strong mayor thing does that. But I I don't, I'd like to hear your take because I know it's your your first term, so I would curious about that.
Yeah, no, and I'm I'm also not sure what what problem the Charter Commission is trying to solve exactly. But but I I I I do think that there are things that we could look at. I know looking at other cities that in a lot of places, there is a city manager who has more direct authority over other department heads, who has more of a more of an executive leadership role. And that that council manager system, you know, it has upsides and downsides. But I do think that the coordinator role is a confusing one in the city of Minneapolis. And I think if we were going to look at something, I think that might be a place that we could look to, to to think about some continuity and to think about having, you know, some some clarity of reporting. I think that the the way the the current executive committee structure works isn't doesn't always produce the kind of clarity that that a council manager structure might in terms of reporting. So I I could see that as something that's worth exploring. I think there's there's some good examples to look to. You know, where they've used that kind of a structure. But obviously, any any structure is only as good as the people running it and their commitment to the, you know, principles of democracy that are that are intended with that kind of structure. So I I think in general, we do a pretty good job making city government work under the structure we have. I think there's things you could fix about the structure. I think we've run into some specific structural barriers that are that we can really identify why they're long-term significant structural barriers in public safety, which is why we're proposing making a change to the charter. I would say that the tone of a lot of the Charter Commission discussion was a little reactive around, you know, it just feels like we elected a progressive council and we don't like what they're doing, so we need to rein them in. And, you know, I don't think that's good governance. I don't think that's a way to make decisions.
So one of one of the things I read in one of the Charter Commission reports may have been their summary of department head feedback. Was was about council, individual council members acting like de facto department heads. Who is that? Do you know who that is? Who's that a reference to? Anyone in particular?
You know, I I I don't know. And and it is frustrating to have a document like that that is anonymous comments that that neither attribute who they're talking about or who's talking to and have that document have any weight in in public debate. But I will say this, I I can tell you that many of the same voices that are saying, we got to rein in this council are the same ones who expect me to have significant aldermanic authority to block a particular building that they don't like or to make some sort of arbitrary aesthetic judgment about a road project or a building project. And, you know, I I've heard stories from previous councils. And in fact, like a good example, that's that's kind of arbitrary is somebody came to me and said, why are you letting my neighbor build a garage with a flat roof? I heard we could only have peaked roofs if the city didn't allow that. And that turns out to have never been true. It was it was literally just something that was enforced by a particular council member who had an aesthetic preference for peaked roofs. And so you just like, they would block that stuff. And this was like many council members ago, right? Like this was a a long ways back and and but this person, that happened to be when they were trying to build their garage. So they got the impression that was city policy. And there's little things like that as you drive around the city, when once you know those histories, you can start to see like, oh, I just crossed the ward into what was once Joe Bierne's district or what was once, you know, Waldeezic's district or whatever, when you sort of know who advocated for what and why. That's a level of power that we've been very intentional about saying, that's actually not how we should be governing. Everybody in the city should be treated fairly. If we're if we're talking about equity, we should be talking about equity. And deciding which roads get paved which way shouldn't be about individual council members' preference and who's good at wielding political power and who pounds on the table and intimidates staff into doing what they want and and, you know, who's sort of good at playing the game. And it should really be about which residents are most in need of the road repair and everybody gets treated fairly. And to get to principles of equity, we've under we've we have voluntarily undone a lot of decision-making power. I mean, the 2040 Plan was at least partially an exercise in taking away council discretion, right? Our goal is that there's a lot fewer variances, that it's a more permissive plan, but then we're not you know, holding out variances to developers so that the only way they can build is to sort of trade favors with whoever happens to be in office at that moment. That's not actually a a good way to govern. And we really tried to say, the rules are the same for everybody. We're gonna fight it out once about what the rules are, and then everybody gets to follow the same rules. And that is a change in governance. And I think there are people who used who who used to govern that way and who still expect that everybody governs that way. And I I do think that you see elements of that pop into, you know, people's discussions sometimes where they've things that they've learned and observed over the years on the council, you know, are things that they that they replicate. And so they'll have an expectation that they can just demand some change that isn't really theirs to make.
Yeah, I live kind of on the border with Ward Seven and Ward Ten. And so the Hennepin Avenue discussion that's going on right now, there's a lot of like this Lisa versus Lisa talk about, well, Goodman's obviously going to oppose the the one with the bike, the bike route and Bender is going to support a better street. So it's like, if we had if we had council members that were in agreement on that, it wouldn't really it wouldn't be that competing dynamic, like who's who's going to own Hennepin Avenue because it's it's the border between the two wards. Okay, let's talk about parking minimums.
Sure.
You're a co-sponsor of the ordinance to eliminate parking minimums, which is a component of the 2040 Plan that was passed a couple of years ago.
That's right.
Talk about why you're doing that.
Well, for reasons of climate impact, we need to be planning for a future city that relies less on individual cars for transportation. For affordable housing purposes, we need to be allowing forms of construction that don't have to orient parking as one of the central demands that they're trying to meet. And as we're trying to create more walkable, bikeable neighborhoods, it makes a lot of sense to give people a wider range of options about how they live and how they build. So I'm excited about it. I think that it's an important change. I think it's actually one of the bigger changes in the 2040 Plan that needed to be implemented. And I know a lot of people have been tracking and care a lot about. And and I think we're getting some good things done along along the way, not just related to the like, there's the big headline change that we're getting rid of parking minimums. But then we're changing the way we think about traffic demand management planning to really incentivize thoughtful use of curbside management to encourage design that really thinks about, you know, as people are changing their traffic patterns, how do we modernize that? How do we think about all the different ways that people are utilizing delivery services, that people are utilizing, you know, Uber and Lyft and whatever? So there's probably a lot less need for parking, but maybe more need for some curbside management to make sure that all the all that pickup and delivery can happen without blocking the street. And so we're we're really shifting kind of what we ask of developers to think about how to make their buildings work both for the residents and for everybody using the public realm around those buildings.
Anton, do you have any housing questions?
Well, you know,
or parking?
I I have, I mean, something related to that, just kind of like a little anecdote. I think when in 2017, I was looking at, you know, everything that we fund with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. You know, you can see how that, you know, what the cost per per home is on a lot of that stuff. And I can remember one project, you know, most of the projects come in around $250,000 per home, you know, we were talking like a one-bedroom type thing. And one project came in significantly lower than that. And of course, you know, I I looked at the details of it. I'm like, wow, this one is, I think it was under $200,000 per per home. What what's the deal with this? And sure enough, it was, you know, a 40-something units and 10 parking place spots. And, you know, I I think that kind of really helps drive home that the the high cost of that, and this was back in 2017, and, you know, construction costs have gone up pretty significantly even in the last four years. And, you know, that's really a way that we can help to, you know, make sure that we we enable housing that is somewhat affordable. And and, you know, related to that, I guess related to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is that, you know, I've, as long as I've worked on housing, I've heard issues about, you know, this this the city only spends roughly, I think, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is roughly $10 million. You know, give or take, there it's it's kind of fluctuated, but that that's kind of generally the number. And it feels like that is just, it's always been woefully inadequate. It's not really enough to to suit needs. It doesn't meet. It doesn't meet the needs of those who who need housing the most. I mean, we can lower the affordability threshold somewhat, but it never really meets that the people who need it the most. So Steve, I I mean, I I think from from reading your platform, it sounds like you're in support of the the public housing levy, reinstating the public housing levy, which I think went away 10-ish years ago. I don't don't quote me on that, but I guess this is a podcast. So like, it's now it's in the public record forever.
We're not cutting it out, Anton.
Great. Okay, well, it's my understanding that it was removed during times when we thought that federal funding would kind of last forever. And, you know, why do we continue to have this? And now, you know, we see federal funding can easily dry up. And whether reinstating reinstating that levy is something that we can do so we can build public housing for people who need it the most. Is that something that you support?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I think, and we've gone under big changes in how we think about affordable housing, right? I mean, we're actually you know, we've gone from in the late 90s, the conversation was about how, you know, if we build a public housing tower, we're we're causing dysfunction. We're we're concentrating poverty in a way that you know, causes all kinds of social problems. That was sort of the analysis at the time. And so they were actually knocking down affordable housing, good dense affordable housing and trying to, you know, relocate people to scattered site housing in the suburbs. And so we actually, you know, we we lost some significant affordable housing to that kind of analysis. And I think what's happened now is that housing prices have gotten so out of step with wages over, you know, kind of the last decades, that at this point, if you bought your house 30 years ago and you just like, like, say you live in Sheridan or St. Anthony West and you bought your house 30 years ago and you're looking at what affordable at 60% AMI is for the apartments coming up around you, your mortgage is less than the rent. Because if you lock that in, housing has housing costs have just skyrocketed. And a lot of those costs are, you know, very real, you know, construction costs, et cetera. You know, very hard to change those costs. But we are to a point now where neighborhoods no longer say you're concentrating poverty and dysfunction in our neighborhoods and all the kind of awful stuff you used to hear 20 years ago. At this point, a lot of neighborhoods are saying, we want that 30% AMI housing because honestly, I want something that I feel like I could afford if I ever wanted to move out of my house, if I ever wanted to downsize. And and so when when we talk to people about what affordability means, more and more people are really wanting that housing. And and people are seeing the stability, honestly, of the public housing towers that we did invest in, that we didn't knock down, thankfully. We have several of them in Ward Three, and they've been good places for people to live for the long term. And so I think we should be thinking about how can we add to that? The most promising place to start is in taking advantage of the new triplex flexibility on scattered sites. There's a whole lot of scattered site housing that is currently in need of repair that could get converted to triplex. And that's a way of of getting two extra housing units on each of those lots.
Yeah, no. And and speaking of, you know, the the, you know, the affordability issue, I think that also talk touches a little on, you know, another one of the charter amendments, or I think two of them are around the rent stabilization stabilization issue. And I think one of the big disconnects, I think, is between people who maybe own homes or have have those mortgages that they took out. You know, 10, 20, even even five years ago, have a very fixed, you know, flat cost and haven't really understood how much, how much those rents have gone up, especially in in the lowest income units that are available. You know, you know, those those prices have really gone up significantly. And when you have that, you know, fixed mortgage, you're you're insulated from that. So so I'm I'm hopeful that 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 passes. And I don't know if you have other other thoughts on on the rent stabilization?
Oh, just I I also hope it passes. Was really happy to support that. And I think it is one of the things that we have to look at. I mean, I and it's it's interesting because when you when you talk to most landlords and you talk about sort of where the cap could get set, there's definitely a point where if the if the cap on annual increases is low enough, it starts to create some real tension, right? People are worried about like, what if they're growing repair costs and property taxes going up and whatever, you hear those arguments. But when you ask people, what's the most you ever raised rent? Most landlords, it's under 5% for sure. And for most of them, if they've got a good tenant, I mean, if they've got a steady tenant, they're 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 raising it much more in the 3% range. And so so we're not going to have much of an impact if we pass that. But then you do talk to some people, whether say, you know, these projects just don't pencil if you do this to us. And I'm asking, well, if you're writing a project, if you're trying to build a project right now and you've got on your spreadsheet six or 7% rent growth year over year, which is going to far exceed wages, which is wage growth, right? Like, which is going to far exceed economic growth in general, you're just building an unsustainable project. So at some point, we just have to look at people and say, you're building something that's actually not good in our city. Like, your plan is going to either fail or it's going to fail to serve us well. But, you know, there there are developments that we shouldn't be catering our policy to. And then there's a lot of housing development that we really do need to see happen.
I was listening to a landlord Zoom call, which I occasionally do. It's a lot of fun.
You you do it so we don't have to.
Yeah, Michael Rainville, well, they're trying to cut me out. They made the the meeting harder to watch, but I got through anyway. Michael Rainville was the guest and they were doing a Q and A. And he revealed that, is it Sonder? Is that the short-term rental company?
That is one of them, yeah.
He mentioned one of his trusted housing advisors when he was talking to landlords is is her name Elisa?
Sure, yeah.
Mulholland? Yeah. And I I imagine she has not kind things to say about you because of the the short-term rental. How would you describe that? Not quite a ban, but?
It's not a ban, but we but we put pretty strict regulations. We're one of the stricter regulatory environments for short-term rentals in the country now. And, you know, honestly, I I certainly listened to Elisa. I think she's very smart. And I think Sonder is, in many ways, at least one of the the better neighbors of the the better neighbors of the hedge fund-backed, short-term rental companies. Like their, their, their policies are generally like, I mean, they're, they're, they're kind of the, the good version of that business model. But at the end of the day, uh, you know, a part of this job is being able to say no to people, even if you personally like them. And even if you are sympathetic in some ways, if what they're trying to do is not good for the city, then at some point you have to say no to them. And that's what happens. So I don't know if she got bad things to say. She certainly didn't get the yes that she was looking for from me.
I, I just, I just assumed because Michael Rainville talked about her as a trusted advisor, I assumed that,
Yeah, and she, and she and she introduced him at his campaign kickoff. And I mean, she's, she seems to be very active in his campaign. I mean, she's a, she loves
I'm not breaking news. I thought it was breaking news.
No, but I think it's, you know, I, I, I do think it's, you know, you, one of the ways that you should be assessing candidates is who are their advisors, right? Like, who are the people who endorse them? Who are the people who, who they listen to? And, and I, you know, I worked on that issue and definitely had to say no to some people in, in that industry. And there's some people who are upset about it. And that is, that is part of the job. And I think it was the right thing to do for people in Minneapolis.
Okay, let's, let's talk about Cam Gordon again, one of my favorite topics. So he, he will often say, when he talks about public safety, it's like, when I was elected in 2005, like, I thought I was gonna do all these things on public safety. And it turns out, when you get in the job, you understand the charter gives the mayor that authority. So the question to you, not necessarily about police or, or mayoral power, but what, what did you find out about the job when you got into it? It was completely different from what you expected coming in. Maybe something frustrating?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. I mean, I definitely think the sort of two things that come to mind for me. One of them is, uh, my experience of City Hall had always been as a community organizer, uh, going to City Hall and, you know, doing sort of grassroots lobbying on progressive issues. And so I really thought, like, that was my image of what's working at City Hall is gonna be like. And it turns out that like most organizations, uh, most like grassroots organizations that are running campaigns have the bandwidth to do a campaign like that, that, that involves them coming and visiting at City Hall maybe once a year if they're super active. But that, the truth is, like, I really campaigned to work with a group of people. And then most of them are like, okay, cool. Now we're working on legislative stuff at the state Capitol. Glad you got in, do some good stuff. And then I never really heard from them. And then in the meantime, I constantly hear from a set of lobbyists whose job it is to try to constantly be talking to me. And so I was, I was surprised by how easily and quickly you start to be surrounded by people who represent a particular perspective, and you have to very proactively fight against that. You have to be very intentional about how you divide up your time, about how you proactively reach out to people to, to get meetings with the people who you ran to represent. Because most people are going on with their lives and also often don't feel entitled to get a meeting with their council members. So they don't know that they can pick up the phone and call me. Where like Jackie Cherry Holmes sure knows how to call everybody's phones and try to get a meeting, right? And so, uh, so you just, you end up, you end up really having to fight. It just feels like you're, you're constantly trying to swim upstream to, uh, against a pretty strong current to, to be meeting with the people you pictured yourself representing and who got you into office. And so, so that was, I think, the first thing that was surprising, uh, and that's sometimes a little bit bewildering when, when you're sort of in the middle of some big fights and, and sort of realize that it feels really big and important to you. And then you're looking around and most people just aren't paying attention to city government.
Basically a story of how Steve Fletcher lost all his activist friends. They went away. They disappeared.
Well, I didn't lose them, but they're busy, you know? Like, everybody's got other stuff going on. And like, they sent me, so they didn't have to think about it. Like, we got, you know, we, we got, we got Fletcher in, he'll do good stuff and we'll talk to him in four years. And, you know, so, so that, that wasn't what I pictured. And I think that's, that's part of how it ended up being. And then the other thing that I think has been surprising is, is nobody really talks about how much of governing is about getting staff aligned with you and moving on work to get it done and, and getting your work prioritized with city staff. And so there's a ton of internal political work that happens that I think is just not visible from the outside and is not necessarily something that people understand. You know, when you're running for the job, that you're gonna spend a lot of time trying to, it's not about winning public support or your colleagues' support. It's about like getting, getting on the to-do list of, you know, the right staff person in public works to get something done.
Yeah, that's, that's something that Lisa Bender mentioned in her like exit interview with maybe the Minnesota reformer. Been trying to do this thing for years and it's finally coming through now just because it's been hard to get staff to take up, take up the job and do it.
Yeah. And, and there's a lot of competing priorities. I don't think there's necessarily like malicious intent. I don't wanna like throw staff under the bus in any particular way, but like, I, 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 I think that there's definitely been, there's been things that I could work on where there was at least a staff person who really was interested in it and who had aligned with what, what they were hoping to get done in some way, uh, where that just created a little bit of winded our backs to get things done, right? So I think that like, the clerk's office and the IT department being interested in data privacy in the ways that they were, it was one of the ways that we were able to, you know, move that work forward in a way that I think is, is good. But I think a lot of times people just assume that as council members, we can just say, we're working on this and that that'll just happen. And that is not how it happens, right? So I, I, I do think that in thinking about, you know, in, in thinking about good governance, I don't know that, I don't think the Charter Commission proposal fixes this. But I do actually think about, you know, how can we, through our committee structures and through the ways that we govern in public, sort of make that a little more visible. Cam actually had like a pretty good sort of public work list in the Housing Committee back when that was still meeting, that they actually voted on and approved in a way that made it a little more transparent, at least like what, what staff were working on and when they were planning to deliver on that work, et cetera. So I think there are ways that we can think about better governance so that that process is a little more transparent.
You may not have an answer to this. It's probably a question better for the mayor, but he won't come on my podcast. So there's been a lot of talk about the cops, all the cops who have left the job in Minneapolis and how this is a, this is a great big opportunity to replace them with better cops, where they're younger, more progressive. And I don't, I don't know if anyone knows if we know who is leaving and who is coming in and how we judge. Maybe we're losing the best cops we have and we're replacing them with worse cops. I don't know. Is there any, any analysis? Is anyone looking at who is leaving? To like, make that assessment?
You know, what I've been told is that it's a mix. Uh, I, and I don't think that, I don't think that right now we have a, a common set of metrics or understanding or analysis that would tell us where I might even agree with the officer I'm talking to, or, you know, whoever I'm sort of asking for their, their take on this about whether they were the right people to leave or the wrong people to leave. But I, but I, what I've heard from people who, you know, work in MPD is that it's a mix, that there are people who, who they thought of as really good public servants, who they were sorry to see go. And then there were people who it was like, you know, probably, okay, they're leaving. And, and I, I don't know what that mix is. Um, I also know that, you know, anybody who really overestimates the value of, of the opportunity to replace them, it does that at their peril. Cause I, I, I think we, we have been trying a theory of, you know, new training programs. And if we're thoughtful about recruiting and, you know, Chief Argando's been personally interviewing every recruit candidate for years, uh, to make sure we're picking the right people. And, and I don't see that having the impact that we would have probably hoped to see by now. With, with as much recruiting as he's had an opportunity to do. And so I, I do hope that we recruit good people and that we train them in the best way that we're able to train them. But I, I am not among the people who think that that is a pathway to reforming the police department.
Okay. I think, I think this is technically my last question. It's an election this year. We're electing a new city council, a new mayor. What, what do you need from the next mayor? Whether it's the same mayor we have now, what do we need from the mayor to collaborate with the city council on public safety?
You know, we need someone who's willing to. We need someone who's willing to listen to us and who and who'll really dig into tough questions with us. You know, one of the things that I think has been challenging is, is there's been times that we've wanted to study an issue. And I think there's been a reluctance to study an issue because when we, when you study something, you discover the things that are going wrong. And that can be bad press. That can be, you know, that can make the city look bad. And, and so there's been a reluctance to actually sometimes even ask the tough questions. I actually proposed a study on traffic enforcement in 2019. At that time, activists were asking us to consider a moratorium on equipment stops because of the racial bias in, uh, in those stops. And, and I had kind of said, you know, I think one of the things we want to figure out is whether if we say you can't do equipment stops anymore, they're just gonna come up with some other pretext. Is it really, is the problem really that we're doing these pretext stops that are, aren't about traffic at all? But are about targeting black drivers to see if we can catch them doing something else. And so I proposed that we do an ethnographic study, uh, where we have researchers ride along and see how they're making these decisions and see how they're getting entered into the database and try to get a better idea for how these decisions are getting made about who to pull over and why. And the mayor and the chief decided not to do that. And I, you know, I, I was pretty frustrated about it because that traffic enforcement in particular is something that's very hard to justify how we would pass a policy under the current charter, uh, because so much of it is state law and then is, is internal police policy about how they enforce state law. Um, so it's really outside of the council's domain. And I just, you know, at that time was not able to move the mayor and the chief on it. So I would say a, a, a mayor and a chief who are willing to admit, we have a big problem. We're willing to work with stakeholders and council to solve it. We're willing to ask tough questions, even if they reveal mistakes of the past. And we're willing to make fairly dramatic structural changes when, when we identify solutions or things that we can improve. I mean, that's what we need. And, uh, you know, it's, there's, there's certainly room for us to make a lot of really important changes. It would be great to have someone who, hopefully the charter change passes on public safety. And so we're, we're looking at someone, uh, the next mayor is gonna be the person hopefully who is appointing a commissioner of, uh, the new Department of Public Safety and is really able to set the tone for how we govern together, uh, over this new department. So I, I think there's a, there's an opportunity to really think creatively and collaboratively in a way that could produce really fantastic outcomes for our city.
Anton, do you have any final questions?
Um, I don't have any final questions. I mean, we're pushing a
After all, after all that?
A long, we're pushing a long podcast at this point, so.
It's true.
I just talk and talk sometimes.
Okay. I'm debating whether to make you do this, but maybe I will. But if you could re, if you could read this mean tweet directed at you?
Thanks. No, I, I, I love this kind of, uh, th- this kind of social media. It's one, one of the things that makes public service great. So yeah, somebody named Speedbump25 wrote, "Just once, I would like to see Fletcher on the front lines. That dude is the softest kind of weenie. All talk and then goes and hides." All right.
That's good. That's a good way to end. And I will put
We're gonna end on that note?
I think so. I'm gonna put the tweet up on the screen. You're gonna read it?
Now, Steve, you're going to hide. Yeah.
Yeah, right. Well, uh, that's, that's, that's how this works, I guess.
We're pushing a 90-minute podcast and, uh, I have to, I have to wrap up now. Thank you to my co-host Anton Schiefer for joining me for our interview with Steve Fletcher, who is the incumbent council member in Ward three, running for reelection. Maybe we should plug caucus.dfl.org for people who want to have a voice in Ward three and across the city. And I think that's the end of the episode. Goodbye, guys.
Bye. Thanks for having me.